Thank you for attending the call to be about a time for Monday. Heavenly Father, as we come together this morning, we do so in the name of the G O R Hymns. Please help us to make decisions for good for this county and which comes your blessing. Continue to provide for each of us to take care of us and love us. We pray that she will bless each and every one of us and God please bless America. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States. And to the Republic of America, which stands when I mention under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee. Texas, when we say it, under God, one and limited.
Okay, well, number two. Number three, that's, I mean, not number two, that's citizens communication. We had no one sign up to speak on communications in the discussion. So without number three, let's consider an act of common resolution and approving publication and posting of notice of intention to issue the county's combination tax amendment pledge revenue certificate. Actually, as a principal amount not exceeding $80,000 in other matters in connection with our. How's the time is there? Time to come to you here for interviews and discussions about our.
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is Mark McLean, and I'm a San Diego Capitol Markus. We're here, I was here two weeks ago to discuss moving forward. The time we're talking, just like we are today, possible addition nine million nine certificates obligation for various county purposes, apple and fruit, that type of projects. We wanted to present that then without a legal item to proceed. Today, we're here with a legal item, so you get back to digest everything we discussed two weeks ago. Today is what's called the notice of intention resolution. It gives more citizens notice that the county intends to borrow the nine million nine. It gets, the notice is posted on your website and in the Duvali County newspaper two weeks in a row. Forty-six days after the first confirmation, the court has the right to authorize the sale of the nine million nine certificates obligation. That is scheduled to occur, if you all approve this tonight, of August eleventh. In the meantime, we've had discussions with possible purchasers, local purchaser. The idea is if it's a win for the county and a win for the bank, then we can proceed. But we have to be able to, like, be able to stand up here and say, the rate that you got would be as good rate as you keep holding in the public. These bonds are going to be high in demand, and we want to ensure that taxpayer is the benefit straight out of that. So we had the initial discussions, looked promising, and we'll keep moving forward. One, we have a public sale, which means we advertise and say on nine o'clock, ten o'clock, um, the eleven, we will receive indirect dividends, anybody's welcome to that. Or sell it directly to the federal, who we know, one taxpayer, two, it's a rate that we would get if we did a public sale. Then it's a win to the county and it's a win for a real taxpayer. So we're going to keep moving both forward if you all approve the notice of intention resolution. They have shown interest, but it has to be good for them also. So that's everything I have today, so it's, to address any questions you may have.
If not, we do have one individual who can address this, Mark, if you're allowed. Yes.
Good morning, Deanna, and Ethel Cruz. I was at this commission's court two weeks ago, presented this proposal to you, and I certainly have the impression that today the county would be deciding if you want to move forward and that at some point it would be a public hearing so that the citizens of Duvali County could come to the court and share their thoughts with commissioners. It sounds, from what we saw already stated this morning, that that isn't necessarily the case. You're basically going to advertise or put a couple of notices in the newspaper for a couple of weeks, hopefully somebody will read it because usually they don't. And then after that process, you legally, of course, can move forward to sell, sell the bonds and put the county into a 9.9 billion dollar debt. I guess I'm concerned as a taxpaying citizen that some of the items that you're proposing to work on, I don't understand, the jail, thirty million dollars to the jail. It is my understanding that the county accepts federal prisoners into our jail because they generate revenue, significant revenue. And I'm curious as to what are those funds used for? Why you have that money, not put back into the jail? And now you're asking the citizens, taxpayers, to take on thirty million dollars of debt to take care of whatever's needing to give. So what's the benefit of having federal prisoners if you're not putting some of those dollars back into the facility? So plus, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that a money thing? You keep pouring money into it and keep pouring money into it. The other thirty million dollars for roads, which roads have you worked on? What is the, how do you assess which roads are chosen? How much money do you already put into those roads? I mean, it's just like, again, the money thing, over and over, asking taxpayers to bear the burden of more taxes, more debt, because we're the ones who want to pay for it. Also, the 9.9 billion dollars sounds like you're probably going to go first to think, does the county not have some obligation? And I guess you are, are you asking others, or maybe not, if they want to be the right the financial institution that buys those bonds? But it seems that we're already in terms of first to think. I don't know that this is the decision for the county, especially not the taxpayers.
Do you think I have some more to add?
The only thing I would add is there's been no decision for the commission for to borrow money. This is just a step so that your citizens here, and then, of course, there's been no decision on where the loan, where the bond can be sold. We've got to make sure that you, if you want to proceed, you go to the place that should go as possible.
Any questions on that? All right, so the question, make decisions for proceeding, about proof of possession. Look up from the county. A motion by Mr. Marcus, second, Mr. Gordon, discussion on various, uh, opposed, motion period. Thank you, two dollars, three, sorry, thank you, appreciate it. I'm going to put forward the center back on adopting a 2005, 2000, 2005 tax record document. You have a tax record document for you. Any questions about that? Over, deadline set by the state, yes, yes, that's, those are, thanks, again, so we became adopted. Thank you.
Deanna and Ethel Cruz, I have on several occasions come before the court over the last couple of years and asked the court to consider having public workshops so that citizens that are interested in learning more about the budget process, as well as how the taxpayer dollars would be spent, would be helped. And I understand the, the excuse that the news most often was after COVID, we couldn't leave together, but COVID has been by almost six years now. And not giving citizen taxpayers the opportunity to be part of the process is really, it lacks transparency, it lacks the belief from this court that your citizens should be engaged. And I know the other excuses, nobody shows up. Maybe nobody shows up, or not many show up, but the court itself could create the opportunity for that to happen and continually do that in the hopes that more citizens will be engaged. I'm very disappointed that the government on this court feels that it would be valuable to have citizens involved in the process. And I'm also disappointed that your, our elected officials, who are not your subordinates, but your peers, because they were all elected as you were, are not given the opportunity to come before this court as a whole to let you know what they need, why they need it, and have a conversation. I don't think the process that currently exists allows the defendants to fully help the court understand why they're asking for what they're asking for. Thank you.
Your motion to adopt. Act, uh, respect, discussion on various, uh, opposed, motion period. Consider act, Adam five, consider act on this made, a official, the county to help raise the, the revenue rate and vote approved of act. This is typical, specific forms, kind of, not sufficient. It's a motion to. Mr. Open, second, Marcus, discussion on various, uh, opposed. Six, consider act on presentation, Texas peace officer class, uh, possible. Yes. Well, this is.
Judge, thank you for allowing me to sign on the agenda today, if you would so, Ethel. Under the local government, of the title of the organization of government, subside of each commissioner for county officers, chapter eighty-six, during the opposite constable, specifically eighty-six, point zero zero two, qualifications and removal. Subsection B states that on or before the two hundred and seventy day after the date of the constable's office, the constable shall provide to the commissioners for county of which the constable serves, evidence that the constable has issued a permanent peace officer license under chapter seventeen oh one of the occupation statutes. I am here today to present to each of you a copy or proof of all five locations on the county constables permanent peace officer license. May I approach?
Yes. Any questions to ask, Mark? Any questions? Thank you for just seeing this, not proving.
Right, sir, just, we're trying to, for parts of session.
Your motion to seven. Marcus, second, sort of, discussion. Take your pardon. Judge, Mr. Second. Thank you, on various, uh, opposed, motion period. Thank you, constable, for taking your attention. I'm number seven, consider act on request of competitive merit, to pay on number eighty dollar kind of, so.
The entity is all here, and, uh, online, so they feel, so they have, uh, it says, uh, the organization has structural and operational changes. So what is structural operation, uh, changes, structural operation change works. And it says, when you deal with the files, you make a change, the purpose of the files is actually, uh, you know, I don't see, uh, the file, you change the purpose of it, is the change, uh, for the numbers, things I mentioned, the, uh, it's, I wrote this, so with that, and I said, and it said, not as required, we're going to buy that work, so about, the part I, where you're changing that, this is not required, but some rates is significant change, but we're going to do that. For example, the organization's composition, which they changed on time, the number of composition qualifications, or the, or three of the organizations, going members. So these files you can change, uh, in two thousand eleven, two thousand fourteen, two thousand eighteen, twenty twenty-two, on the final, uh, following, uh, form nine ninety if, ask the question, if the organization makes significant changes, if you don't need that this, uh, prior to four nine nine nine. Our, Donald Sis, the fire call, nine nine nine, this law. Each year, I answer no, to me, that answer to anything, they should let, they all know that, that's the law supposed to be, and they should let us know, because they changed it over the years. Originally, it says, the may should be taken over the river region, this is purpose to take to our, mark. It says, to encourage and enhance and promote tourism and other businesses, especially in the valley county, the further promotion tourism and tourism, promoting valley county as an open after ground for tourist destination. In two thousand eleven, they changed, article one, they said, situation of office mention, physical office, lower, no H T H R R, any, this is the form that they adopted. The original system of partnership, a new partnership shall be with the, of a logic business, what we didn't count as a doubt, to say, Texas, physically placed, hotel, taxi, step to the policy of Texas, if they did not have a state, to determine whether they changed the, will be those persons on each of these, the paid, our, membership, current membership, this, of the population, the doctor, by the, by the, by the, the changes to the new one. In two thousand fourteen, they changed, uh, did, to say something else, to, they changed again, in, uh, as far as the board record, the issues of everybody, it takes their ownership of all four of us, the board members showed, uh, the, 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 those who passed, and they, all the, 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 again, they changed, and each, uh, the directive, uh, they changed the last four of us. Uh, and, 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 in the original one, it says, he bought, that's all, he attacked, and when in my two thirds, and sixty-sixth, and two thirds percent, members of any request are special meaning, provided with the previous vote, votes was given, then at the primary, then by, sent to the T H C R membership. Previous notice can be sent by, to me, on your facts. Two thousand eleven, majority vote, the board record, the main amendment, the belief of the, of that, unless the parties of, of, of appropriations, say, Texas, not corporation that, then this is, so, yeah, I, 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 two thousand five, the open years, the order changed the laws, they have, our group, we other than the, the, it says, the organization have numerous, it's a, it's, it's, and it's, and it's, and it's, the members who, who wants to help, and are as involved in tourism, the valley county, it still says, at one nine nine nine, as I say, we, we, this is, is anyone who wants to help, or is involved in the promotion. So it, it just bothers people that, even though nine, two organizations, could be that, we're not involved in it, they, whether they want to, they, they, not, not, and we have no way that someone can help on, I mean, that's not only, that, that, which. There can go a person who probably felt on, so I think that, you know, when, in this number two, the organization, it's all, it's a change of laws, oh, by the way, I asked for, see, we don't believe that's, the laws from, we can, they can, I have laws.
Yes, when you say wait, you're trying to, on, yes.
Those, okay. Okay, then the second thing is, uh, um, this, not responsible to do, this is a law, it says, section fifty-two, twenty-three, use of the general conditions, this is commissioners' for, he might, shall, in, to be a commission for his, it doesn't indicate, I have, on the side, not of the fourth court, two years ago, we were able to see the financial report online, imported into the county commissioners' court. It was part of the record, they were alive, see, what, yeah, it's supposed to be done quarterly, because it does say, period reports to the commissioners' court, these quarter with listing and sync, say, a person with revenue, right, tax. So, no way to do it now, it's only used to, give the, you know, continue to weigh that, on, how that tax, you know, what the version feels are, not even, it's not kind of, the next one, this one, the other show, the, the, this is, the, the, because we're, we told that you can only use tax money for, uh, that, that, the, the, not going to happen, but it was very unclear, it's what, what, G H C R, they, 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 they and, you know, you have, because one representative, we have, another representative, so, so, so we're, it's one way, and one way, what are we planning to do, it's one way, including both counties. And so it's not, it's not a change, so, a party to their attorney, D H C R R's, say, we can, money, so, advertise, can't, it's supposed to, I, the, the, and, uh, well, I'm still here, my computer says, it says, uh, records, it says, this is section, from records, this is, that, 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 and it answers the county, so, this is, this is, this is, and it says, all first, county law, it's, you know, it's, we're, uh, in the tax, we want to continue, rest, so, in a long, it sounds like, if there's a, funds, you know, the, 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 instead of all, oh, you know, music, uh, and it says, please, each activity, what we have, is funded directly, funded by the law, well, and it's something, funding by the law, it's, I'm asking, that, 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 why, we, we, we just, when that part of it says, you can, have, or, you can't, that is directly funded by the tax. We used to have, we, one, we, 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 T H C R are now, family, we, most of us, just continue to build up, and the, T H C R, okay, but now, it's a, it's, 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 it's quite, what, what, the, 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 he said, he said, he said, he said, we, 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 they, 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 And have, who has taken a line to the, the valley town, can't be there, that's, that's not advertising. So, I'm just, I don't know that, but the next one, I'll, I'll, this, uh, in the law, it says that, uh. This is the tax, so, like, on tax, it's, the original law said, uh, I mean, I personally, like, tax, all, uh, the shadow, not the ones. Uh, but in part, we have, uh. Um, other guys, I'm actually sitting in the right class, I'm always in hope, but y'all see, really wants, but. But, commission is never even necessary for us to, one percent. The county must decide a way to do one percent, maybe one percent. And it's in the law, I said, same time, it's supposed to promotion of tourism and law of logic. And that one percent, the county, is not promotion of tourism and logic. But, there is a new law, it's, it says, huh. What is printed into nineteen sixteen, and I can't, not worth it, we need to, 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 to not more than, the lesser of two percent, seventy, or seven, five thousand, thirty. Rather than tax on laws on the share, the magnitude of creation, maintenance, operation, and insurance, and contract. Administration system, students, community, that, 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 so, you can get to, to, to do that. Y'all have to take a lesson with that, so, it says, it's for promotion of tourism, logic, like, I think, logic, doesn't say, uh, it's, 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 uh. Uh, so, I wanted to, to know that, and that, law, associated, you know, you see, uh, uh. And I think that's probably, uh, to say. Well, I'm Justin Virgil, from the T L A S. I'm going, you know, seem to be the boss of ways to promote tourism, knowledge, and life, and that, I can't, I don't know. It says, I would like to promote, present of, 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 one is how to present, and this, of, interest, tourists, two of, interest to this. Well, Justin Virgil, it's, uh, it's, you love ways to promote tourism, and it's not very, the T H C R, and helps with, most of the, most of the, most of the families, and most of the, and most of the classes. And I'm along here too, is there.
One percent in two thousand and twenty four. You value company received one one four hundred fifty eight thousand eight hundred and seventy nine dollars. In hot tax funds, that's a lot of money. One percent to your business students in that area. That are the ones that are bringing in those dollars is a very fair request. I hope that the court will approve it.
Thank you. Thank you, Thomas.
Morning. Yeah, I have something to talk on a couple of things that Mr. Perry mentioned. At our start of our bylaws, so we did do a file of last year recently emails. And we were asking for you want to change this for us to come into the office for review. Uh, we run an article with Justin Virgil to this help. We actually helped him start rewrite what she wanted, but it was never actually presented to the board. So that might be. And not change it to what she wanted, because she got a product to our attention before anything. As far as her financials, that was a mistake on my part. I didn't uh deny the office's case of any appeal. Our attorney's in the department in our office and I'm applying to that. Was how this was made there. It was about some parents didn't get paid to live in the country. Uh, our tax updating legislation and we had, we heard there was quite an opposition with a straight uh. Say the bottom's office, uh, anyone that we spoke to in our office uh left with understanding and. Two percent rate and we all coming in now, um, they were. Representative bottom actually crisis to file them together, uh, just so they would go through the process quicker. Uh, our work expenses that were mentioned, uh, that was to cover training for the board, uh. And also the board retreat and then the travel, we also can receive that is to cover the conferences that I. Or the director of the team. And this. This tax on burning on lighting businesses, uh, they just essentially pays it, uh, businesses. Like they're remitted to the county and the lodging providers. So like sales tax and blood that can turn it in. Uh, if we suspend the four percent uh of that tax, even just for mommy and our services will be. We did, um, the marketing will stop, the reference will call the cleanup and. The local business can go on support and more risk than any moment to build this past few years. Uh, the state will still collect their six percent tax, so the tax won't blow away completely entirely. Uh, and the state tax doesn't come back. And those guys.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Perry.
Judge Menzel, just one additional financials, I apologize, saying. The court does receive the financials every quarter when I send you the quarterly audit, every copy is in there.
They're not.
Oh, that's a bottom of the top of the task. I'm always correct me uh in remarks to where we clean up, we give that sustaining that tax. We could also be uh hall the cleanup activities in this. On our service, just sustain that the entire deal without looking back. The river region with this contractor, the volunteer workers have. The short three hundred thousand dollars a year that we use clean up all the. Back to the upstairs, all of those things. Then those defective fees due to falls, so. That's mission repeat that is only to be aware how we can that county. From my. This is not as a, as a business owner, it's not for me. This is collected directly by from our guest and then related to them. Regarding the nine months, uh, I'll work as we. Sure that's a star. Saying we have split the. All quarters are listed. Maybe there's some. Their patients that we make on that, I'll call them that. And as Ms. Chapman said, the trackers work hard, submitted for the nature of that we come home and report to her office. And serve it to you guys as well as the draft question, if you all get that uh in here. And most of you ask questions every year as you should. Something that would just then submitted to the Mr. Court for approval. All of the our budget partners are able to help me if that's it, and they have. Maybe welcome those questions, we owe. Are the tracker? To have questions on what is this and what the container has a question. And I think. I just want to go down just because you're not seeing communication here at this court. We do need to be regular communication following you. And you have typically asked questions about the cleanup, whose regards that and obviously. Do have a lot of communication. May not be in this meeting. But we do have. Right here.
Please.
Hi, as the Lewis Board Member, I would just want to go over some. I have a lot of questions about the budget, so the very person that I met is making a baby. We come through that budget and we see why that I have a question about. She had a song, then it made sense. So when you run in this room, ask questions about budget. This welcome to me with David Matthews, the foreman. As a small business in American company, I don't have the resources to be able to produce large scale. Very targeted, very strategic market campaigns. I can't do that. I'm one of the smaller guys in the area. The only way that we can really target that people could be wanting to come to that county. Is through the Texas Department of Labor Region contract and the government tax solvency. We can't do on our own. We need a lot of tax solvency.
Where are you, Bo?
The four percent is our duty. Not that whole percent going down to help you, it does just help. As small businesses, other parts of the town, it helps value it before it breaks out short. About marketing money promotes our area like. We have said. It did this, then this is all sustaining that content even temporarily. Would without doubt. Her each and everyone is in the reverse of this money also. For you to job, we have our. Board member, our staff, the high candidates, work our workshop, our business. As a business owner. The River Region Coats. He said it's important to promote our business. Without this lot of contact, we no longer have that ability, we no longer have that ability. It must be presented for ourselves and in the burden to us. This money helps with the river cleanup, it helps with the contractors on our cleanup. We have paid us donors with the director on Thursday, anyone that's business owners. Anyone to come in and ask for cheap things that are over here. One person that I've represented is Heather. Without those hot pack laws, this will affect our our business. This is what we're here for, maybe look back if you ever been watching partners, maybe not.
Okay, that's all the speakers from the house.
Judge, Judge Menzel, if I could say one thing. Okay, I was the person present at the original meeting that. All of the uh, at that time, this would have been seventeen, eighteen years ago. Uh, members or vendor owners attended to decide, did they or did they not? Want to implement, recommend to this court to implement a hotel tax. Obviously, you were a reporter at that time. Um, there was good strong debate. I still have the list of the people who attended, Miss. Bergen's daddy was there. Uh, I can tell you that uh, the vote uh was. Pro the tax, so I came back and reported to the court that the vote was pro the tax. Through the twenty years and the first ten years, my office voluntarily. Did the management of the tax until at. One point in time when I was able to come. To persuade the current Texas Assessor Collector that it was really something that. Came under her 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 view. The reason for that is she is the only elected official that can collect the tax. This is a tax, it's not a fee. So the tax is a give out with county tax. Whether I agree with the tax or not is not relevant here at the time. My department developed all the forms, my department developed all the lists. And it was turned over and this uh Verstov has. You know, continued to do an excellent job. We we cut it, the court cut it once for three years and it was a disaster and you put it back. This bunch wasn't here, but you were there. And we put it back. Um. It's a difficult thing, it's always gonna be a difficult thing, it's unfortunate, but I put a lot of my staff's time and effort into. Monitoring this. For the court. And I can tell you. You can't. You cannot pick a bit of a contractor. And detail audit them. Um, as long as they fulfill the major responsibilities. As far as the one percent the county maintains, it is pulled into the perplex. The perplex brings in eleven million dollars. That's.
Do you question for the court? Can you answer the question? Take an orac. Hey, that's considered an act from the seventh. The liability is given to annual five hundred forty four. Yes, number two is the common area and they have submitted their annual portion. Annual audit to the fourth. We do not have to prove it, all we have to do is seven.
Yeah, I would go through. I've spoken to this court before about my concerns about adding taxing entities. To our county, uh, because ESC two is one of them. Uh, and ESC three, I know it's going to be coming back to this court at some point to try again. And as I did before, I will make every effort to. Make sure if and when they come back with us to get it once again. Uh, I am curious as to why the valley company is still about giving some dollars to ESC number two. Give it the back, but they are now uh their own taxing entity. Even if it's a small amount of money. We are all aware that other department's, the Memphis African already well explained, developing. Uh, indicate that they need funds and uh. If Comcan already has an ESC already collecting taxes from their residents and their communities. Why can the county not take those dollars back and give them to the departments that that need them? Because they don't have the taxing entity to establish.
Do you question for the court, comment? As far as to accept the audit of the E S. The difference accepted by. Why should there be a second? Open discussion. On the third day, I oppose motion to carry. I'm inclined to consider an act upon a great subdivision of the. The fourteen of the of the government's spending in the three. Who can govern the year, which is a decision, we should press it. We can just imagine. Uh, this is a subdivision of part of law two fourteen. In the United States. Quite so. This is a division of the law that's already. Pretty well already developed and made provisions of it. Old box, very cat water. This is an act with a very attached. Who's the? This is not a law. Only strictly right now, not all of them. Right about to do that. Yes, all these laws have leaders, that's something very careful about. And then going to drive law, pursuing. Have. And this is a primary criminal effect. Considerate to the final criminal, so if you have any claims you want. The represent that we ask. I have often heard that all this day. Two marks of acceptance to grant the primary criminal. Which parties and per se. Make a discussion. On the third day, I oppose motion to carry. I'm inclined to consider an act upon the hidden passenger separation. Of the code damage for. Uh, it's the hidden passenger separation uh. That didn't sit for nine to seven, that's a just solid upgrades to the. And we divided into uh. Three blocks. It's something I'm doing. We have options. It may bring water. Question, Mr. Jackson, on the primary. If you. Yes, I have more other. Really, uh, each of them three, it looks like a. Yellow square of office. Even if you have speakers, right, this is sharing, isn't it, that gives back to you partly uh. Finally, it's on the copy of part of share. Water service is all right. Now, we're going to get tabs of whether or not here's almost. And it is a different water service that comes in. Stall two more. I'm sorry. Yes, that's not a problem with the water and the health. And uh, the word that the word is right that the. The other question from Mr. Jackson. The last one to grant the criminal. Open to your second. Mr. Ryan, discussion. On the third day, I oppose. We're going to begin in two weeks. I'm inclined to consider an act on what is there for the. Just. Uh, this court's strong. May the eighteenth through two and four. Planted uh five rows, three hundred. Precinct and uh three rows and four hundred precincts. Fast five homes on uh, and row two, three, four, four, three, one, really two, three, uh. Four twenty four, fourth United Pacific Street, United States. Uh, gut brush on category two thirty seven, three thirty eight, three forty seven and three eighty eight. Gut grass on uh. Two seven, three forty eight, three fifty. Fifty seven, three seventy three, three seven four, Concani uh, El Pad. Three to run there and. Fix workshops on three oh six, two oh seven, three oh five, three twelve, three four one, four twenty eight. Uh, moved the roads from the United States to Comcan. We moved a quicker two United States and the Comcan. And then back to the county court. Three street bump sticks on category four, five, six, four thirteen. Move the farm three from category three forty eight. Repay the United States driver. Third interest from the county eighty three, the the fifth, the fifth five. They just do that. And we. Straight road, road signs in the United States. A lot of people. Do you question for this? Is there much to refer to? Mark is your second, second. Mr. Marshall, discussion. On the third day, I oppose motion to carry. I'm inclined to consider an act on that.
Yes, sir. Um, as I begin the process of closing, you're wearing now. We shall review this second or third, we will start speeding. Um, the fire is coming before you, um. All of the line of interest in today are. Um, ninety six percent of our grants. The grants I tend to amend at the period end because they all were taken out themselves. Uh, in addition, as we saw, tax by the calendar. It was about, so we're beginning the process that we. Let's just say in one, the only thing I added of course was that it serves which is. Worst thing, although it's not. Part of the truth in the tax station as we located with the three point five percent. Yeah. Uh, that's it. To begin, you know, we have, we, anytime you see the word revenue certification, hold it that way. It means money came in that was not expected to come in or came in higher than it expected. And so therefore I am increasing those lines accordingly. Will they increase again? They could. I don't know that. Um, it's more than everything things about the general, that doesn't have to be. Um, the, anytime you see, well, as you know, we're going through is one of those of interest. The closing of the fire. Uh. Situation barriers, uh, and so. Anytime you see that, as before I told you, those revenues coming out of. Contingent liability, they're tied. To what's going to be a hefty insurance reimbursement from tax that all runs through uh. The judge's office. And uh, I. And also helps in an elevated process now, maybe a little bit of overweighting the floor. We are pretty close to the end, I think uh Rita moves in tomorrow, I would say that, so there we are. Um, let's see, when you come down, we go down, you see where I have uh. A part time clerk. I've been without the full time clerk for a few months and uh. So I went ahead and did a part time clerk for a while and took it back some. Y'all. The same going, that is true for the next two, the tax center. Had a position empty for a while. She has uh, she's she's hiring at the position. She's realigning that position to a lower salary and therefore that allows me budget money to allow. Not me, but allows budget money to allow her to ship those uh. Salary funds. Uh, and still stay with under the. The elevator is done. And uh, as you can see, uh, we're two hundred sixty nine thousand. And uh. I don't think that will allow.
Let me say, uh, say, uh, three working or sell.
Really, where?
Thousand dollars. Car show.
I mean, everything is selfridged, it's markets too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then he's working.
Yes, and uh, actually, uh, for those of us who. Or you simply. You all still bet. Okay, if you're gonna stop or not. So. And I'm just one of the ones that got caught in. So. Um, we move into several items you can see related to the. Uh, actually, they're all related to the jail, biggest problem. Is forever transporting, you can see where I'm using reserves to handle those. What that tells me that I repeat telling you. Um, when uh, the eventual um, tax. Uh, you know. The statute requires a county clerk to assist the county judge in the preparation of the judge. The statute requires a county judge. To talk to the departments. That require commissioners, because sometimes I think that this is expanded, but it does require them. Once the county judge gives me directions at what may or may not be. Uh, or he feels it's good things to change, then I go into the software. County hours would be the same way. Uh, within the. And make those adjustments and then the first preliminary draft. The judge has provided me his information. I will find. Now that the debt. It's been seen for a good part of time, but I will hold. We agree, the judge and I, the first draft would be four fifteen. That would be uh, the typical initial draft without rent. It will be the main focus. To include four of our bikes, P O C and those others out there in the description. The parts of brands, they will be in there and we'll see.
The first stage is for national region.
Yeah, this is the one where I tell you. Okay, here's why it looks like you can give a five percent percent. And I'm with Kelly Frager and uh. The longevity information from her as well as. Tell me what I can say costs and tell me what. Because for me, it's just that number. Until y'all get down to that percent. If I would say it correct, then I get a little serious about bringing things up to you. So there is a lot of implications. This organization. And we were cautioned because two people. It's simply directly here to those about it and how this can be officially. As they further down, we'll see a few minor things, um. Um, the criminal grant had a rat. And so that's in there. Uh, which. Is a. Now. There may be some refunds on that, but. I can keep it up in the budget curation for me right now, so that uh, you know. You have a little better idea. Um, and honestly. How we manage all this work. New commission, but others too, they can. Mister's budget is ten, from ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Forty four, forty seven and eighty nine. The other one is costume. And uh, there was. Um, yeah, there's our two, but the other's a special version, we can really make them all. Um, the uh, the other items, um. The, the other items. Are less, I'm having to say lots of revenue certifications. So those are obvious. When you speak of word revenue offset, that's different than, okay, I got it. That I thought. That means I had one. So therefore, we were able to pay. President, that's what we're definitely for. If you're making your example, but we sent twenty-nine thousand dollars. The revenue offset of the district judge awarded the judgment and the business attorney. They. I made the part and or the defendant. Or defendant, other than the. Those statements are all. In our compass. Constables, there are revenue certifications, as you know, every year. Constables that hang on for kids, what else? He goes money, the other money gets recognition. And so that's a good incentive for them to use. The, honestly, everything else is revenue certifications. So the question.
Questions, now, I, I just, I will say that. Every director of issue under the department that says, you know, for the budget, you have input.
Yes, everyone has.
You might have a form of identity, part of, part of a criminal certification. And discretion. Yeah, Alice has, now just getting ready to make that presentation and she said her.
Yeah, that is the law. It doesn't wait till eight, nine, direct, meet. He also meets with non-electors. We have like our parent.
The Harvard campus and our campus.
So it was very quiet to read it. So I'm sending a letter saying I'm happy, don't worry.
So no show, that means he's still paying. It's possible, this is always same thing, right? So I've done that.
And the judge and I, we're actually the guy that the first budget done. So that first budget comes out. Part of our, our formation to be. Aren't speaking where it was in your. If people say, yo, the judge is being real nice to you, I don't really know if he can. Or say, you know, I would be real nice to you, but I'm joking. Doc, you don't think you earned those fifty thousand and you took it? And you're correct.
It's, it's like any level, though, if you have the presentation, you have the funding to. I may say, yeah, it's great, but you don't have the funding to fund it. Then it's officiating.
He and I.
Kind of family.
But you got to pay the traffic bill. They got to pay that transport. You got three thousand minutes. The federal money is not very used to me. We don't even bring in that money from federal fees to make payroll for the jails. So anytime I have any questions, got any department and money's coming in. The jail works very hard. You need three years until that started.
So each, you break stuff up in the jail and they spend it out there. Those jail, those area district to the jail in twenty-four hours, days, seven weeks. And I'm going to tell you, it's hard to maintain, take it. That jail, it's not living. It's been there fourteen years, I'm sure. Fourteen, right? They've been in there fourteen years. So there's a nature, that's an example. My sign goes out of your house. We're in there and you shoot it. So it's not, it's not a new system.
That's much of my law, reporting these people. It's not like those. They thought like this is. Almost a diverse subject, um, neither right. But I am writing. I can hire. The one thing that I said to you, I said. So wow. How do you give out some money? This is.
It's not a matter, do we want to fund a jail? We shall fund a jail and shall do it according to the jail commission, which we don't have it circled. But yeah, that's not a matter.
We're, we're, uh, the business community work very hard. But with the smut today and, and we heard, and we can be so. Hopefully, operation loan star five cases are not. So they're on our. How long until they get moved? When, when they get moved to, uh, they will. There we start saying. Oh, I'm sorry.
Anything else you want to?
I'm sorry.
Anything else you want to present?
No, I'm good.
Questions of the. You heard of the explanation, the recommendation, the situation. Accept the land of those minutes. Question bar, which is your second. Second. Which party's discussion on Fairway State Act. I oppose motion carry. I'm going to thirteen, is considered an act upon through a most recourse. You have not particularly given a reader report. As you mentioned to the. Mr. Barson, that's your second. Which, comment, discussion on Fairway State Act. I oppose motion carry to the twenty fourteen. Consider an act upon paying a bill that not due to electronic. Question, question comment, your second. We should be able to discussion on Fairway State Act. I oppose motion carry. I'm going to fifteen, is considered an act upon reservations and property matters. As we're close today, I'd like to do so, maybe your boss, Estella, your room. Alonzo D, W R L. Homie B, Alejandro Junior. And Juanquin Roche. Any others? Tom, yeah. What's your question?
Tom.
Tom, yes, Tom. Any others?